Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Wycomico County Council Meeting, and I like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to start with the opening prayer by Councilman Bill McCain.
In Bowery Heads, our Father who art in heaven, how would be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Okay, now we can do the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Joe Holloway?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I'd like to take roll call the council members. I'm Larry Dodd, Council President, and starting with Mr. John Cannon, Vice President.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Ernie Davis, District One.
Here.
Ms. Nicole Ackley, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Josh Hastings, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Joe Holloway, District Five.
Here.
Mr. Bill McCain at large.
Here.
Thank you. Now, county staff, Wayne Strasburger, Director of Administration. Mr. Wayne Strasburger. All right, moving on, Mr. Anthony Gutierrez, Director of the Board of Elections.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Ruth Colburn, Director of Wycomico County Department of Corrections.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Tony Rudy, Assistant Airport Manager.
Here.
Thank you. Now, guest, Ms. Meredith Miller, Mental Health Coordinator for Wycomico County Schools.
Here.
Thank you. This time, did somebody say something? All right, if you're not speaking, can you mute your computer? It sounds like a dog or something in the background. So, at this time, I'd like to address the airport resolutions that we've had some discussion on lately, and I've had some conversation with the county attorney and some council members, and I was asked to do this. We'd like to schedule a public hearing in person regarding, one, the proposed pre-annexation covenant and agreement, and, two, the airport water service agreement that are being required by the city of Salisbury to provide city water service to the Salisbury-Wycomico Ocean City Airport. Are there any council members that are interested in this?
A motion for that, Larry. I'll make that motion. That's an in-person hearing when the COVID-19 restrictions are lifted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I think this is Bill McCain. I don't have any interest in that. What council members have you spoken to, Mr. Dodd? You haven't spoken to me about this.
Well, it was addressed by, actually.
You said you spoke to council members.
I did.
You didn't speak to me about this.
Like, well, okay, there are some things that we discussed with the county attorney, but we're talking about it now. I thought maybe you would be interested in it. So, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion now?
I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
I'm not either. I mean, we've heard plenty. We had a great town hall, I mean, with tons of information. So, and people have been expressing their, sending us emails for a month on this, and we've seen every one of those.
The county council didn't have a town hall meeting. The Airport Commission did, and there were still some questions, and I'm not so sure that all the questions were answered. And also, this council person has requested through our county council administrator, the loan funding and the grant funding, and also the contracts, and we've received none of that information yet from the county Executive's Office. I was the one that, I don't know who else mentioned it to Larry, but I mentioned it to Larry, about setting up a public hearing because the county council hasn't had a public hearing. We also were told by the county Executive's Office that they would return to us with a second work session, and after we had this public hearing, if we have it, which I hope we do, I hope we won't deny the citizens of Wycomico County to have a public hearing on this matter that is very important to them. I hope we would have a work session. The only work session we had was on the MOU, and they were supposed to return with a work session for the pre-annexation agreement, and they never did. So, I think, I think a public hearing in a public forum where citizens can attend would be the avenue to take on this.
Yeah. Well, just as for clarification, resolutions do not require public hearings, and the town hall forum that we had last week was a much better forum than a public hearing because people can ask questions and get their questions answered. All a public hearing does is just give people an opportunity to send in emails, but we've already seen the emails. So, we don't discuss anything at a public hearing.
We didn't have a public, we didn't have a town hall meeting or a forum, Bill. The Airport Commission did.
Right, because the council didn't schedule one.
Yeah, the Airport, the Airport Commission did our job for us, and they shouldn't have. They did a great, they did a great job. We should not have given them that authority. I call the question.
I disagree with that.
Call the question.
I don't think we're done discussing, Mr.
I called for the question, Mr. President. It's not debatable.
Oh, it's not?
We need a vote then.
All right, we're gonna vote. John Cannon.
Not, no.
All right. Ernie Davis.
My problem with this is that we don't know how long this thing will last. I mean, this could go on for two, three years.
I doubt that, but.
We don't know that. I think it needs to be something sooner, and I say no.
Ms. Ackley.
This is for having a public hearing.
That's correct.
Yes.
Mr. Hastings. I didn't hear you.
No.
No. Mr. Holloway.
Yes.
Mr. McCain.
Opposed.
That'd be a nay. Chair votes aye. So, there will not be a public, a public hearing coming up. We tried to do that for the citizens.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to take Resolution 20-2020 from the table.
I'll second that.
Which, oh, say that again.
It goes to vote. There's no debate. It's not debatable.
Which motion was that?
Motion, Resolution 20-2020 from the table.
20-2020?
Yes.
All right, I'm trying to find it. Which one is that? I'm not even seeing it.
Pre-annexation agreement with the airport.
You want to take it off the table?
Taking it from the table.
Okay, I see what you're saying now.
Back to the desk.
Okay. All right. You have a motion? Do you have a second?
Yes, there's a second.
Motion is second. All right, roll call. John Cannon.
Aye.
Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Nicole Ackley. Nicole Ackley.
Aye.
To take it off the table?
Yes.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
Joe Holloway.
No.
Bill McCain.
Aye.
And the chair votes no. So, that resolution has been taken from the table.
At point of order, Mr. President, this time I think it would be in order to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 20-2020 for discussion.
All right, any discussion?
A motion to approve, Mr. President.
Do you have a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, got a motion approved. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call. Mr. Cannon.
It's open for discussion first, Mr.
Yes, that's correct. Let's discuss this.
I'd like to call the question. I think we've had enough discussion on this topic, if I could.
Is there any discussion?
Call for the question.
Roll call.
Excuse me, Mr. President Dodd.
Yes.
Can we ask the Executive's Office for a copy of the, the contracts for this project?
A little late now, isn't it? You're gonna vote on this?
Well, Larry, and to the rest of the council, you know, we request, like I said before, we've requested the contracts.
Mr. President, I called for the question.
On the grant. You said it was open for discussion.
Right.
I called for the question. I said, I think that this has been discussed thoroughly over the last six, six weeks.
Mr. Cannon, I heard you. The thing is, Ms. Ackley wanted to speak, but we're on Zoom and it's delayed, so it takes a while. Please give her a chance to speak. Now, Mr. Holloway has the floor.
There's a motion to call for the question, and we're waiting for a second, Mr. President.
We weren't done with discussion. Mr. Holloway?
Call for the question supersedes the discussion. That's why you call for the question, Mr. President.
You had a second. Mr. Hastings seconded it.
Mr. Holloway? Are you done?
I'm not done. I just, I think we need to see the contracts on the grants and the loans. We've not seen any of that yet. It was requested on the 24th of April. It's never been sent over to the office. I don't see how we can vote to move these resolutions forward with that. And I do understand what Mr. McCain said about resolutions do not need a public hearing, but it doesn't say that we can have one. So, I don't see how we can vote on this when the council's not been furnished information.
Yeah. And then we had a, some of us watched this forum on PAC 14 that the Airport Commission put on, and there really weren't any emails in support of moving forward with this. All the ones that I heard were against it. I heard maybe one that was in support of it, and then I heard Mr. McCain saying that he was meeting with city officials and negotiating, but we haven't seen any minutes to those meetings. And I thought by law we were required to have minutes for all the meetings. Mr. McCain, do you have any minutes to those meetings?
We had numerous in favor of, I mean, did you not look at all your emails, Mr. Dodd?
They weren't minutes. We need minutes.
I'm addressing your first question about, when you were talking about no one speaking in favor. We've had countless number of, of business people and residents throughout the county, Chamber of Commerce members, real estate people, residents. We've had people in Colburne that have expressed favoritism to this. So, and regarding meetings, your term quote, negotiation, we had discussions, Weston Young asked me to go with him when we met with the city to talk about the pre-annexation agreement because of the, when we had our meeting in January, we had questions around that. As a council person, any of us can attend any meeting, like Mayor Jake Day said at the town hall meeting, he said, you, he talked to myself, and he's also mentioned Mr. Cannon. He said, because we called, because we took the interest, and that's what we're supposed to do as council people. So, and we don't take minutes from, just because we attend a meeting.
We had a council member that was abused a couple of months ago because she attended a meeting with the county executive, and we were advised that the law now states that council members that attend meetings are supposed to have minutes, and you stated negotiations, which kind of threw me off at that.
So, Mr. Dodd, you have, you have minutes from every meeting you've had with every person you've met with? I think not.
You stated there were four people, and you were negotiating this contract with the city. So, I think that deserves.
Well, we wanted to negotiate. I don't know what you're talking about. Negotiating a contract. We were discussing the language in the pre-annexation agreement, the contract. I mean, the annexation already exists.
Point of order.
There's a language in it that we were discussing.
A point of order, Mr. President. A motion was made, called for the question. It was seconded. The council is obligated to vote on calling for the question. There's no debate.
Mr. Cannon, we're not done with discussion.
Mr. Dodd, this supersedes discussion. It's a call for the question, and it's been seconded. The council is allowed the opportunity to vote, not the president.
Mr. Cannon, Mr. Cannon, you need to let Mr. Dodd run the meeting.
Ms. Ackley.
Run the meeting.
When there's a motion on the floor, he has to recognize it.
There, Mr. Cannon's rules, I guess. Mr. Holloway, were you done?
I was advised whenever Mr. Cannon was president that I had to take meeting minutes for all, any meeting that I attended, I had to submit meeting minutes, and I don't do that.
I don't recall making that comment. I don't know what this has to do with the significance of the resolution.
It has to do with somebody meeting and stating that they were negotiating. The term was said twice on that meeting.
I don't know what.
It really threw us for a loop.
I don't know what relevance that has to this resolution.
That's a lot of relevance. The council doesn't know if somebody's negotiating on behalf of Wycomico County.
I'll, and I'll repeat again. Mr. Cannon's already called to the question.
All right, no more discussion. Roll call. Mr. Cannon.
Is this a motion on, to vote for the resolution?
That's what you called for.
No, I called for the, I withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw my motion to call for the question. If you're going to go ahead and vote on the resolution, that's good. Okay?
Well, no, I don't have to do that. What were you calling for? What, you keep trying to bully this meeting. Let's have a discussion without getting irate.
Mr. Dodd, I'm just trying to follow procedure, and it's being ignored.
I wonder what procedure you're referring to.
Legislative parliamentary procedure?
Roberts rules?
I'll withdraw my motion to call for the question.
Okay. You withdraw your motion to call for the question? Okay. Moving on.
I was assuming we were taking a vote.
Sorry?
I was assuming we were taking a vote on the resolution.
Seems like a lot of arguing, I guess.
It does.
All right, which question are we voting on?
We're not. I thought you were, I thought you were suggesting we were going to vote on the resolution that's on the table.
No, I wasn't. But you were pushing for that.
There's a resolution on the table, Mr. President.
I thought there was a question.
No, we had a resolution on the table. I called for a question to end discussion. Mr. Dodd wanted to go back to take a vote on the resolution, so I am withdrawing my motion to call for the question so that we can get back to discussion and vote on the resolution on the table.
Okay, we're open for discussion. Ms. Harley, are you keeping track?
Yes, I am.
Where are we?
You're on the voting, you can discuss, or you can proceed with your vote on the motion to approve.
The motion to approve.
President John.
Yes.
This is Josh.
Hi, Josh.
I would just say, just from my couple of comments, I mean, this is a, I think we, this is a process. This is a project that's been going on since 2016. It's, a lot of folks have, you know, are aware of what was going on, what was happening. This is, I think we've worked for a while to try to put real parameters in place to make sure that all of the residents' fears of, of any kind of annexation from the city of Salisbury with a 30-year agreement, that that's been put to rest. I feel like enough individuals have had a chance, an opportunity to weigh in. We do have, the city's expressed very clear intent that all they want to do is help the county accomplish this project. This is something, this is something that's good for the entire region of this county. You know, this is a regional airport. This serves more than just Salisbury and Wycomico County. So, as a whole, I think we've, we've given a lot of good opportunity for the public to speak out. This is only a resolution, as a reminder, so there's really not even a need for a, a public hearing, but I think we've done a good job in general, and I think there's been enough parameters put in place to prevent any kind of, to meet the, the concerns that the public has put together. So, I would like to move forward with a vote on this.
And, Mr. Hastings, I understand what you're saying, and I really do appreciate it, but we're hearing from citizens in my district, District Three, District Five, Mr. Holloway's district, and even today, citizens were calling us, asking us not to put this back on the table and vote on it. And that you're still upset with losing access to Wallston Switch Road without any input.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hastings? Mr. Hastings?
Sure.
I agree with most everything you said, but you said this has been going on since 2016. It was supposed to come to the council as 2016 as an urban services agreement. What changed was it went to a pre-annexation agreement, and that's, that's what has people concerned. So, yes, it has been going on. In fact, I think it was before 2016, but we weren't privy to the information about a urban, pre-annexation agreement until they brought that to us in January.
And, Mr. Holloway, just to interject, I mean, because you're well aware that the city of Salisbury doesn't do urban service agreements.
I wasn't aware. We were told that, Bill.
And all their, anytime they extend water or sewer outside of their municipal limits, they use a pre-annexation agreement. Unfortunately, that title gets people's attention, even though the reality of the agreement is basically takes the same form of an urban service agreement, but this pre-annexation agreement, and thanks to the city, with the language they inserted into it with their 30-year clause and their other parameters, have basically watered it down to a, I mean, a document, as you heard, and you've heard over and over and over again, there is no annexation taking place of any property, and these agreements are only pertinent to the airport only.
Bill, I would, I'd like to comment back, and I wasn't finished talking, but anyway. Like I said, I'm not on the city council, so I know that they were not doing pre-annexation agreements. What we heard all along before that it was going to be an urban services agreement, and you're right. When folks seen the pre-annexation agreement, that kind of got them involved, and that's why we've had all of the folks calling in. Also, there is areas along Wallston Switch Road that is going to be annexed. There's even properties that's being advertised as being in, under the pre-annexation agreement for a selling point, for whatever reason, I don't know. And that's up to the realtor to know what that's all about. So, that's why the folks are upset. If we'd have known this was a pre-annexation agreement a long time ago, it would have probably been easier to explain. We've never seen the contracts. We've never seen the grants. We've never seen the loan documents. We've been asked, the council has been asking for that information, and we've never received it. You know, why is the council finding out about this stuff in the afterthought? So.
Right. But this was all, the, the water management agreement and the pre-annexation agreement, we had a work session on this in January. It was presented then, and this is all that we're voting on now. So, we need, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us go, I would like to see us go ahead and vote. I mean, this has been discussed, I mean, to death. There's no, there's no annexations taking place. Like I said, we've had these agreements now for five months, and I just like to see us go ahead and vote.
We're not done with discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Holloway.
We were not, we were not told about the pre-annexation agreement before January. And, Bill, you know, as a council person, and there's no, I don't know if it's required or not, but if you're in these discussions with the city, why didn't you fill the other council members in on it?
Joe Holloway, you were the one that tabled this at the meetings. We didn't have a discussion. We haven't had a discussion on it. We couldn't get it to the table. You tabled it.
I'm talking about when you were in the discussions with the city. Why didn't you keep us informed about it then, before it was taped?
I was with the executive. I was just part of a meeting, Joe. I was just somebody part of a meeting. Any of us can attend, any meeting that we want to, that the county's taking place.
I'm not condemning you.
I've been happy, I was more than happy to discuss it, if we ever had an open work session to discuss it, but it got tabled.
They were not going to bring it back to us. They brought it to us for a vote without a second work session, Bill.
I'll just say it again. You tabled it. We didn't get to discuss it at our meeting a month ago.
I know I tabled it, and I'm glad I did.
So, now we're asking for work sessions instead of voting on this blindly?
Exactly. Were you trying to say?
Somebody's breaking up.
I just, I just wanted to clarify something.
Can you start over? You were broken up.
Oh, sorry. So, on the 31st, we had our meeting, and we discussed it, that we, Mr. McCain, and I don't know if Mr. Cannon was also in on the discussions for the water at the airport. I'm assuming that's what Mr. Holloway is referring to.
So, we had a, you talked about our meeting, our council meeting?
Yes.
Right, we all were there.
And there was no discussion of the meetings that were taking place.
Right, because they had not taken place, Ms. Ackley.
So, at that point, there, we weren't even talking about a pre-annexation.
No, we were. Dallas Baker presented us the water management agreement and the pre-annexation agreement at that meeting.
Okay. And that was on the 31st.
Yes.
Um. Laura, and maybe Mr. Taylor. Something is tabled. Is it supposed to be brought back at the next meeting?
This, this is Robert Taylor speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. There's, under Roberts rules, the way they read, when you table something, if it's not brought back by the next meeting, after the meeting at which it's tabled, it's dead. That's Roberts rules. Now, I think this was tabled two meetings ago, if I'm not mistaken. So, theoretically, it was dead after your last council meeting.
So, we haven't adopted Roberts rules of orders, at least since I've been here.
But you've been essentially proceeding under them. For example, the question call that was made a little while ago tonight, under Roberts rules, theoretically, that requires a two-thirds vote to cut off debate. It's not automatic. So, I mean, I don't know what, what rules you're using, but it seems like you're using Roberts rules to a large extent.
Right, but Wycomico County has never adopted that as their formal policy.
But they don't have any policy. In other words, you don't have any essentially basic rules to go on.
Well, I think what's being ignored here really is that the council wanted to have, at least members of the council wanted to have this on the table for discussion, and the council president refuses to put it on the agenda, we only have one option, and that is to, as we're doing tonight, to make a, a motion to put the resolution back on the table. It's our only option.
That could have been done at the last meeting also, and as I say.
Well, we were hoping it was going to be on there. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We were hoping it was going to be on there.
But the motion could have been made at the last meeting. It's like it was made tonight.
It's on, it's on, it's on here tonight. We have a second. We have discussion, and I think the council has the right to make that decision.
And it requires a supermajority.
This motion does not require a supermajority.
Right.
Can I just explain something to council real quick as far as the motion to table? Historically, this, this motion has been made when council wants to postpone the vote on a particular agenda item, whether they want to postpone that vote because they want to have a work session, or whether they want to postpone the vote because they want to have a public hearing. or whether they want to postpone the vote because they want to have a public hearing. In the past, council has made the motion to table a resolution, say, for example, to a certain date. And there's been a lot of misunderstanding about that motion because the motion to table is technically supposed to just be for matters that are of urgency. For example, if you were to have a guest come before the county council to speak, and if there was a little bit more time sensitive than the item that you were currently discussing, that that motion could be made to table the current discussion item until perhaps later in the meeting. That's really the intent of the motion to table. If you want to make a, if you want to postpone agenda item to a future council meeting, you should be using the motion to postpone, and then it's to a certain time. Or you can do a motion to postpone indefinitely. So I hope that clarifies a few things for you guys.
This is Harley.
Yes.
If I could ask, in light of the fact that we don't have a formally adopted parliamentary procedure, has there been precedent in the past where motions that have been tabled have come back after, long after the following meeting? Is there precedent to that?
There, there are. I did find a couple of resolutions, as I mentioned, where perhaps the council wanted to have a work session before they voted on a resolution. And that has happened, but the motion to table was to a specific date. And that was like two meetings out.
To be clear, we do have precedent that we've done this before, which would make it seem like we could go forward in this kind of manner. I would make a strong argument that in the future, we probably should adopt real Roberts rules or some sort of formal rules to prevent situations like this in the future. But if there is precedent, then maybe it's time that we we can move forward with.
Mr. Dodd, if I could just add, it doesn't sound like that precedent is exactly one point.
Regardless of all that, the motion, though, was already made. Second, we've already voted to bring it, it's already back to the table. So that's already been done. The question now is, and there's a motion to vote. I mean, it's already been been brought back. That was already voted on. So now the question just is, you know, we just need to vote on the the resolution 2020.
2020. Any more discussion? All right, we're going to vote on resolution 2020. What is that resolution, number 19? Is it 20 dash 2020?
It's Larry, it's a 20 dash 2020.
I got that now, 2020. Okay, roll call, Mr. Cannon.
Hi.
Hi. Mr. Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Ackley.
Hi.
Mr. Hastings.
Hi.
Mr. Holloway.
Nay.
Mr. McCain.
Aye.
And the chair votes nay. Okay, have resolution passes?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could, please, I'd like to make a motion to take resolution 21 dash 2020.
21 dash 2020. All right, there's a motion. We have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call. Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Ackley.
Aye.
Mr. Hastings.
Aye.
Mr. Holloway.
Nay.
Mr. McCain.
Aye.
And the chair votes nay. Made that resolution passes. All right. Moving forward.
Point of order, if I could. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
That was the motion to bring it to the table. We now, it would now require a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote to approve the resolution.
21 dash 2020.
And it will be 21 dash 2020. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Ackley. Ms. Ackley. She's froze up. Mr. Hastings.
Aye.
Mr. Holloway.
Nay.
Mr. McCain.
Aye.
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 President Dodd, can I just get clarification on who made the motion and seconded that one?
Uh, the motion was made by Mr. Cannon, and was it you, Mr. Hastings, or Mr. McCain? McCain seconded, thank you. All right, the chair votes nay. Ms. Ackley, are you on board?
How about a thumbs up, a thumbs down?
She's, her face is frozen. Can't see her. Exactly.
You can use the chat feature as well on Zoom, Nicole, since you're having some audio problems.
Nicole, send that chat to Ms. Harley.
It just came across.
Okay, I see it. Yes.
And she said she voted yes.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five to two. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Just one thing. I apologize if I was a little heated there. Thank you very much for recognizing the motions.
You're, you're fine. I got thick skin.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, right now, since all that's over with, I would like to offer a proclamation for National Corrections Officers Week, if Ms. Ruth Colburn is still with us. Okay. So this is National Corrections Correctional Officers Week. So whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of inmates, and their position is essential to the day-to-day operations of correctional facilities. And whereas the duties of correctional officers are increasingly complex and demanding, and where the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibit exhibited by correctional officers deserves the utmost respect. And whereas the important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition it deserves, and it is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are vital, who are a vital component in the field of corrections. Now, therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week beginning May 5th, 2020, as National Correction Officers Week in Wycomico County, and calls upon citizens to observe this week in recognition of all correctional officers done this day, the fifth day of May, 2020, and signed by all county council members. Ms. Colburn, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate the council taking the time to recognize the staff at the Wycomico County Detention Center. Every day, they walk through those hallways where there really are monsters and mixed in with them are the mentally ill, the homeless, the broken, and the addicted. We don't have a who's who to tell us, tell them apart, and they all wear human faces. Our staff have to protect the public and also be counselors to the needy. There's not many people who can do it, and even fewer who do it well. With COVID-19, we've got new challenges, and there's a lot of unsung heroes being brought to light, but nowhere on the TV do you see any corrections people. My staff, your staff go to work every day, not knowing if they're going to return home the same way they left. They're brave, kind, and patient, true public servants. They make me proud. So once again, thank you, and thank you for your recognition and support.
Thank you, Ms. Colburn. And by the way, Ms. Colburn was via phone and not Zoom. And I do want to point out, we're a little bit out of order there. I guess that discussion kind of threw me off, but we should really vote on the consent agenda item before we move further. I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Got a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Hastings. All in favor, roll call. Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Nicole Ackley.
Aye.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
Joe Holloway.
Aye.
John Cannon.
Aye.
Bill McCain.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. The consent agenda passes unanimously. And moving on with the next proclamation for Children's Mental Health Matters Week. Ms. Meredith Miller, mental health coordinator for Wycomico County Schools. So Children's Mental Health Matters Week, whereas mental health is a key component of a child's health development and Children's Mental Health Week provides opportunity to focus on important matter. And whereas, according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed, can somebody unmute their or mute their phone? And whereas, research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health disorders among children provide better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to services and support, and also benefit from the integration of behavioral health in primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas it is important that families and communities learn about warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. Now, therefore, the Wycomico County Council thereby proclaims the week beginning May 1st, 2020, as Children's Mental Health Matters Week in Wycomico County, and calls upon all citizens to observe this week in an effort to raise awareness of children's mental health, done this fifth day of May, 2020, and signed by all county council members. So if you would, Ms. Miller, you've got the floor.
Thank you, everybody. I would just like to say, on behalf of Wycomico County Public Schools and our community partners, we thank you for recognizing this week as Children's Mental Health Matters Week. Our school system and community partners are continuing to provide mental health services to students and resources to families during this pandemic. And we just want to say thank you for taking the time to recognize the importance of children's mental health and all mental health in our community, especially during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Ms. Harley?
Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening is discussion with Anthony Gutierrez, Director of Board of Elections on voting during the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Gutierrez, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. Anthony Gutierrez, election director for Wycomico County. As most of you probably already know, but perhaps not all of the general public, the governor approved our plan, the State Board of Elections Plan, that is, to postpone the Maryland primary until June 2nd, and also to move it to a mail-in ballot election, which means for Wycomico County voters that registered Democratic and Republican voters should be receiving a ballot package in the mail this, starting this week. And that will include a prepaid postage return envelope, which we have not done before, so that voters can send it back with postage already paid. In addition, starting Thursday, May 21st, the state board is supposed to be delivering two ballot drop-off boxes. One will be installed on May 21st at the Civic Center. The other one will be outside the Board of Elections office at 345 Snow Hill Road. Our office is closed to the public, but the drop box will be available to voters to drop that off if they prefer. Another part of the plan is that the state board is requiring us to offer in-person voting at the Civic Center on Tuesday, June 2nd, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. But the state board members were very adamant that their intent is to offer in-person assistance to such voters as, for example, a blind voter who may want to use the ballot marking device because it has an audio ballot feature which allows them to cast an independent ballot. Or a voter who, for some reason, did not receive a ballot in the mail. And remember, in Wycomico County, that's only Democrat, Republican voters. So the intent is to keep the turnout on June 2nd at the Civic Center as low as possible because safety is certainly our utmost concern for both our voters and for our poll workers. And so the message we want to get out to Wycomico voters and all voters in Maryland is please, please consider using the prepaid postage envelope or one of the two ballot boxes that we're going to be making available between May 21st and June 2nd. Additionally, I'd like to say that voters will see there are four contests in Wycomico County on their ballot, at least four contests, one for president, one for Congressional District One, and two contests relating to the presidential nomination conventions to be held somehow later this year. Additionally, voters in District Two, part of the county council District Two, will have a fifth contest with a candidate that's running unopposed either on the Democratic or the Republican ballot for the nomination November. So not a lot to vote on on the ballot, and certainly with persons getting that information at home, we hope that the pretty self store do do point out the instructions are very clear. All ballot oaths require a signature, and election, Maryland election law requires that if it comes back without that signature, we're to request that the local Board of Elections canvass it and reject it. So please do follow all instructions. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Gutierrez? Hello? Well, while we're waiting for someone else to unmute their computer, I want to thank you for standing up for the disabled and handicapped citizens and requesting in person to voting. I think that's a great idea. A lot of people have been wondering about voter fraud, and I have a question. If my neighbor's ballot comes to my house, can I put in who I want and scribble a signature down and turn it in, and will that be counted? Not saying I'm going to do that. It's a facetious question.
Absolutely, of course. And to your point, current law, current Maryland election law is that when a voter casts that ballot, part of that oath signature required is that you're signing under the penalty of perjury that you have not, that you're not committing that type of fraud. And again, we are dealing with current Maryland election law as it is, and that's part of the process.
Okay, all right. Any more questions? All right, no more questions. Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. You were very informative.
Thank you very much.